Now call this meeting to order and we are two minutes late. That's all right. Who's counting, right?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Does anybody, I'm taking it up, does anybody wish to sign up to speak before the city council meeting? Going once, going twice?
This isn't an auction. Okay, they'll call the meeting to order and we'd ask Mr. Sullivan to come and offer the implication. Please stand and then Pat, would you lead us in the pledge?
I ask you to bow with me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the beauty of this day, Father, and we give you the glory for it. We thank you so much for these men and women who serve on this council. Father, we thank you for their willingness to serve in this capacity. And Father, I ask that your wisdom and discernment be upon them tonight as they make the decisions that are before them. Father, bless them in peace in their decisions and we just ask that your will be done. We thank you so much for this great city we enjoy, this great state and this nation, and those who are willing to sacrifice to defend it, who are all over the world tonight and who are willing to sacrifice time away from family and friends to serve this great land. Give them peace and comfort and protection, Lord. Thank you so much for your son, Jesus. We thank you for the sacrifice you both made on our behalf and the blood that was shed on that cruel cross. We ask these favors in his holy name. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and be seated. And now move into community-related announcements and Mr. Lyon, you're on deck.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start out with our June sales tax check, which is the final, final check for this fiscal year that we're in, 2022-23. Our sales tax and use tax versus the same time last year was up 2.3%. It was, it was kind of a interesting note because usually both these numbers go together and when one's positive, the other one's positive, but our actual, our use tax was down 13.8% and our sales tax was up that kind of negated that. So for the year, we're up about 7%, year-over-year and versus our projection, which is what we use to manage our budget process, we're, we're up 12% for the year, so we'll finish the year at about $5.7 million over what our projection is. So that's a good thing. It's a good thing. Metro area, a lot of the cities were down for the, for the month of, of June. We being overall 2.5% or 6% up. Our friends from Dell City were down 1% overall for the year. They're at 1.98 where we're at 6.59 for the whole year. Oklahoma City was at 1.65 for the month, overall about 6.9 for the year. More, 2.2 at 6.7 for the year. Edmond was down over 6% for the month. And Norman was down almost 8%. Yukon down 3.8. So I felt pretty good after the comparables for this, for the metro. So good job to our citizens who are loyal to, loyal to shopping in Midwest City and please continue. At this year's Neighborhood Association celebration, for all those that attended, we had 230 attendees, which has got to be a record. Twenty-four different neighborhood associations were represented, 20 businesses donated to us, to the celebration. It was definitely since COVID, it was incredible turnout and participation from, from many neighborhoods around the city. So thank you to all the neighborhoods that showed up and got a free burger and free hat. Good job to Mike Stroh and, and his staff who put this event on along with the CAOs from the police department. They did a great job. So. Cruisin' for Coffee is this Saturday, June 17th, from 8:00 to 11:00 in the Santa Fe parking lot on 29th Street. And then on Saturday, this same day, Saturday, the 17th, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m., we invite everyone to our first annual Juneteenth Midwest City Family Festival. It'll be in Joby Barnes Regional Park. We're very excited about this. There'll be food and fun and, and no unity take place that day, so please everyone come out and support this great event. Next is July 1st and 2nd is the Free Tinker Airshow with live streaming available on Tinker's Facebook page. We're very excited about having the Navy Blue Angels here. We expect 100,000 people each day for this event, so get there early and get parked and into, into the, to the venue. July, and that's every other year, just, so next year we won't have an airshow, but the following year hopefully we'll have the Thunderbirds and keep rotating that. July 4th, we'll have our Tribute to Liberty in Joby Barnes Regional Park from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Bring your chairs, be fireworks and, and music and what's the band? I never get it right. Where's Josh?
Wise Guys.
Wise Guys. It's a great band. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lyon. We have a special guest among us tonight. I want to introduce Floyd Eason. He is the mayor of Dell City and he has a proclamation to present to our fair city. The floor is yours, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
It is a pleasure to come here. I mean Midwest City is my second favorite city in Oklahoma and I appreciate this opportunity and I come here in a spirit of cooperation and I just wanted to return several favors that Mayor Dukes has shown me in the past. And so that has, what has brought this proclamation. I'm going to ask Larry Hopper, Larry, would you pass these photos out? It's the Rotary Club. I have this proclamation and, and before I landed on the proclamation, I did a little bit of research, Mayor. I, I went around and talked to some of your constituents. And I polled, I polled somewhere between two people and 15,000 people, somewhere between there. I polled those people and after I threw out all the comments about tar and feathers and potholes, what I boiled that down to was the, this is the result of that poll and I'm going to read this proclamation for you now.
It wasn't a bit, trust me.
Whereas Floyd A. Eason, the mayor of the city of Dell City, was the highest bidder of the Midwest City Mayor for a Day auction item at the Midwest City Rotary Club Shrimp Boil. That's what got me into this.
Yes, it did.
Whereas the city of Dell City and the city of Midwest City have always shared a spirited and healthy rivalry, especially in high school sports.
And I think y'all are ahead.
It's okay. Whereas the city of Dell City's eagle mascot is much more exhilarating than the city of Midwest City's bomber mascot. Whereas the city of Dell City's color scheme of red, white and black is more fashionable than that of the city of Midwest City's black and gold color scheme. Whereas based on a recent poll, the city of Dell City is considered the favorite city of Tinker Air Force Base. I conducted that poll. Whereas many fine citizens reside in the city of Midwest City and with respect to those cities, those citizens and to honor their fondest dreams, the city of Dell City hereby extends this honorary title. Now therefore I, Floyd Eason, Mayor for a Day of the city of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim that on June 13th, 2023, that the city of Midwest City be renamed East Dell City. A dream come true. Mayor, welcome to East Dell City.
Now hopefully we can cohabitate.
I'll bet we can.
And we will hang it in a very prominent place.
I'll bet you will.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. In all seriousness, municipalities throughout the state, unless they cooperate in doing programs and, and learning how to extend that hand of friendship across the, across jurisdictional boundaries and, and help each other out, we won't survive. And we're always looking for opportunities to help each other out, especially surrounding Midwest City. And Dell City's always been a, a good friend of Midwest City and us of them. So it's all done in, in good spirits, but Dell City's a good place and they've got a great, great leadership over there. That being said, we'll move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any council member requests to discuss an item or unanimous consent cannot be received, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. I do need to request that item three be removed. It will come back to us once some issues are cleared up. That being said, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may be recognized, I'd like to pull item number four, 11, 12, 13 and 14 for discussion, but I do move to approve the rest of the consent agenda outside of four, 11, 12, 13 and 14.
I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. Item number four, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action regarding a resolution to renew the project's agreement required by the tax apportionment refunding bonds taxable series 2018-23-24. Mr. Cromer.
Just educate me on that.
What it is?
Yeah.
Sure. So, so what it is, is for, for the bond that we have, this, this bond went, was used for the sewer plant construction. And so this is just one of those legal ramp, things that we have to have where we have to renew every year that we're going to keep making the bond payments.
So it's not anything relevant to the vote we took on the tax increment a month?
No, yeah, nothing, has nothing to do with that. This is just something we have to do for the next umpteen years until we pay off that bond.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Cromer, I meant to call you, but I ran out of time today, so I apologize. Thank you so much.
And motion is second. All in favor, ring, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. Ms. Bennet, I assume that 12, 13, 14 are all kind of combined, so you have the floor.
Wait a minute, 11. She asked for 11.
Oh, 11? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, number 11, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, approving amendment number three to the contract with RLL Shears Company, PC and increase of 40,000, 251 for total contract price of 281, 662 for the purpose of developing construction plans for the Mid-America Park expansion. Mr. Bundy.
Mr. Bundy, this is in Ward 5 and I know we have Councilwoman Price Allen here and I know she's been a dedicated advocate to the Mid-America Park. I'd just like to see if you could give us a brief breakdown of what that item is all about, please.
Sure. So this, this project has had a few delays associated with the federal bond, our federal grant that we received. We received the money two rounds and both of them were held up once, the first one by COVID and the associated staff that was not in the office. And so we were waiting on signatures, waiting on signatures. And so then we began, began to procure some of the playground equipment. And then the second round of grant got delayed. And all through that process, the playground equipment got more expensive. The design consultant designed some things that had to be redesigned. So for this $40,000, most of it is because of the playground related to redesigning it after the consultant designed much of it. So he had to redesign most of it. Let's see, the, um, another item that's, that's relatively minor, but our disc golf subconsultant to that has to come back out. Originally it was intended he would come out, look at it one time and then design from Kentucky's where he's from. But because of the ice storm and it's been delayed so long, he wants to come back out. So there's, all of these are associated with the delays because of the COVID, the ice storm, the grants.
Got it. Thank you so much for breaking that down. With that, move to approve.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. Item number 12, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, reappointing Cy Valanchekad and Tammy Cook to the Board of Adjustment for additional three-year term to end on June 9th, 2026.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Ritchie. Honestly, this is really more, I guess, a comment and a request to council. And I've been kind of persistent about this over the last few months, Mayor. And honestly, we can handle the rest of the items as one because the core matter that I want to address is consistent with each item. We have a municipality of 60,000 residents. We have some very dedicated and diligent community, public servants who serve on various boards and bodies. One thing that I've noticed is oftentimes what happens is we have one member that serves on multitudes of bodies or repeatedly gets the same terms. I really want us to be very intentional about the type of outreach we do to recruit additional volunteers to serve on these boards and bodies. And then I also want, in, in order to hold myself and my own colleagues and I expect the same accountability from you guys, we have to work together is when we submit names for these boards and bodies, then we each individually do conflict checks. We have working relationships, family relationships. And for that conflict check to go even to the layer where the individuals that we are appointing don't have any potential professional conflicts and monetary conflicts. And I know the city is committed to doing that, so I just wanted to voice that again.
Well, like in, you know, in reference to the email that's sent out to everybody last week, the conversation, you know, a lot of them do fall on the mayor. Some of them are ward-centric. And the conversation, though, if it's a reappointment, it usually falls in my lap and conversation is two things. Are they willing to serve? And is there any issue with them continuing to serve? And then if the answer to those questions are affirmative, then, then I approve them. But you're absolutely right. In, in times past, we have reached out to all the council on different appointments and it's been crickets. So it is incumbent upon everybody to have several people, constituents, that you're willing to appoint. And when these vacancies come, then you are, you've got somebody on deck to move forward with. And in addition to that, to make sure that Mrs. Donaldson is aware of these names. And, and I think she sent out a, a new list of where everybody's at right now. So that's my ask of you. And usually if there's an issue, I will reach out to the council person, say, hey, you got an issue with this? And, and if not, or if I don't hear anything, then, so your point is well taken and you're right. We need to recruit people to, to serve and, and we will try to be a little bit more diligent about that.
With that said, can I move to approve all the following items?
We gotta, we gotta vote on each individual one, but that's all right.
And I'll add, if you have any constituents in anywhere that are interested in serving on a board, we're happy to educate on what they do and meet with them.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ritchie. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. Item 13.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, appointing Rick Rice to the Midwest City Planning Commission to field unexpired term and Jim Campbell, Ward 2, to end of, to the end of August 12th, 2023 and important, and to appoint him for a full three-year term to expire August 26, 2026 and reappointing Jim Smith, Ward 1, Dean Hinton, Ward 6, and Rick Dawkins, Ward 3, to serve three-year terms to, to end on August 26, 2026.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sir, in reference to Rick Rice, the only conflict I have with him is he was my opponent the first time I ran. So that's the only conflict we had. But I did do. Yes, you did the second time. So this was, this was one of my appointments. I went, I knew it was coming up. I went to the mayor and I first asked Mr. Rice if he was willing and then I got ahold of the mayor and said, hey, I got an opening and I've got somebody I want to appoint. And he, so we did, that's how he got on it. The other two, I'm not sure how it worked, but that's how Mr. Rice got on it. And there's no family relationship.
The other two are reappointments, but if you don't know, Rick served on council for eight years or 12.
I actually did 15.
God bless you.
Because I started in six and I went over to two.
That's right. And he, and he's, and he's a well-known attorney here in Midwest City. He used to do a lot of pro bono work for us. So welcome back, welcome back, Rick.
He was also, he was also city attorney for a while too, so.
I have a motion. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. Item 14, Mr. Lyon.
I just have one comment on 13. With him and Dawkins together on this planning commission, it will be interesting.
It'll be a hoot.
Have a good time.
Together, it should be interesting. Okay. 14, discussion, consideration, possible action of appointing Ms. Marcy Nash for Midwest City Council, Ward 6, for a three-year term ending June 13, 2028 to replace Ms. Sherri Beard, who resigned as the Ward 6 representative for the Midwest City Tree Board.
Move to approve.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. All right. Now moving to discussion items. Discussion item number one, Mr. Lyon.
PC 2140, public hearing, discussion, consideration and possible action of an ordinance to redistrict from R6, single-family detached residential district to RD, medium-density residential and a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential for the property described as the east half of the northeast quarter, southwest quarter, of the southeast quarter of Section 35 Township 12. Range to west of the Indian River Indian also addressed as 8610 and through 8700 East Main Street, Midwest City, Oklahoma. This item was voted on at a previous council meeting, but the public hearing had gotten left off and it was approved by council, but we need to go back and, and correct the lack of public hearing and, and revote.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have any issues with this particular item? Seeing none, Ms. Ritchie, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'm thankful for the applicant being very gracious, coming back two months later. He's been great to work with, so we appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience with us.
The only issue that came up was the concern from the neighbors about the drainage and they, they then assured that we dealt with and I could see the applicant shaking his head in the back that it'd be dealt with again, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, second.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. Item number two, Mr. Lyon.
Public hearing, discussion, consideration and vote on a resolution approving the Midwest City and Midwest City, Oklahoma budget for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 in the amount of $126,359,555 and establishing a budget amendment authority.
Well, we've worked six months to do this and to be completely honest, it's a very clean budget. And to be completely honest, it's a very clean budget to the best of our ability as as human beings. I appreciate all the work from all the staff to be able to put this together. And so, uh, I thank you for our, our long meeting that we had last time to bring it before council and hopefully that answered a lot of your questions. And here we are.
Well, we, we, this is a public hearing. Whoa, 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 whoa.
Sarah's got a-
We, this is a public hearing. We have two people that have signed up to talk in reference to this particular item. Hold that thought. Mr. Goldslocker.
Hang on, Sarah.
Really, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Kromar, for your diligence, for your ethics, for your willingness, um, to be transparent and have an open door policy and, with your patience with me and my questions and educating me. And I also want to acknowledge our city manager who spent nearly three hours, um, answering many questions. I mean, I had questions. And we, we didn't want to bother you, so thank you so much, Tim. Uh, I do, I was advised that, um, that we were going to have a representative from the fire department union here tonight.
Uh, he's here.
Uh, can I ask a question? Or I, I think I have three of them, please. Thank you, Kia. I don't have any more questions for Mr. Kromar unless someone else does.
Um, let's get our two public speakers and then we'll, we'll ask Mr. Beeb out. Would that be quite all right? Mr. Goldslocker?
Ward seven.
Glenn Goldslocker, fourteen oh nine, Evergreen Circle, Midwest City. I noticed in the budget, you're wanting to give bonuses to people who live here. And many years ago, this was one of my pet peeves with Midwest City. But over the years of learning about Midwest City and how city government operates, I've changed my mind. The single most important decision a city, this city council makes is to hire the city manager. And we have a incredible city manager. It is his job to hire the best people possible. If Robert Coleman lived on the moon, I would pay for his transportation. Yes.
Do not move to live.
So, and it's the same about the police chief, public works director, emergency management, public, public relations. We can't, I understand trying to get people to live here, but it is your job to create this quality of life that makes them want to live here, not to pay somebody to live here or to limit ourselves because they happen to not live here. I feel this, I didn't feel that way about our superintendent of education until we ended up with one from Edmund. But, but my, it's, and you were talking about boards and, and, and different things. And if we don't create the quality of life to get people to want to live here, the kind of people that want to be on our boards and commissions and our different things, then, then it doesn't matter. And the one thing we have to do, and I, is we have got to come up with a, a residential inspection program. I know we don't want to do it. I know it's going to cost a lot of money. I know it's going to ruffle a bunch of feathers, but half our, half of our people are rental. And renters don't run for office. And renters do not volunteer to be on boards and commissions. And renters do not volunteer to be in our civic organizations or to be in our churches. They are basically, they're here, they do their thing, they take advantage, but they're not part of our city. And so trying to get people to actually live here, to improve our quality of life here, to improve our housing stock here, is what this city has to do. When you've got a house that someone's taking care of and the person next to it isn't taking care of their house, that person's going to sell that house to a rental agent. They're not going to sell it to another person who wants to live here because they're not going to want to live next to the house that isn't being taken care of. Now, everybody knows how I feel about, about code enforcement. If we had a hundred of them, we still wouldn't have enough of them. And that code enforcement is like going after the, like, the horse after he's left the barn. We need to worry about improving the quality of the homes and the people that live here. We wouldn't have to worry about the lawns and the cars and the, and everything else that's wrong. Since Big Brother, otherwise known as our state legislature, got rid of our rental registration program, which our mayor worked so hard to pass and which was actually making a, a real difference in Midwest City, we have no choice. Are we going to get to sixty percent before we do this or seventy percent before we do this? At what point are we going to do this? We're already at fifty percent.
Well, I don't think we're at fifty percent. We're, we're just shy of forty percent, uh, out of nineteen thousand rooftops. But there's no bigger advocate for that except for the fact that if we go the route that you want to go, we don't, there's not enough personnel that we can hire to adequately function and administer that program. We have gained some legislative movement in getting that program back. Uh, and I will continue, as long as I'm office, to try to regain what we lost. But your point's well taken. Now, I will take exception to one thing you said, Glenn. Renters are just as much part of our community as, I mean, I lived in seventeen different houses from the time I was born until the time I went in the military, and every one of them, except for one, was a rental house. So rental, people that rent, due to their circumstances, due to the market, are just as much part of our community as anybody else. So do they have time to get involved? Most of the time, they are trying to make a living. So, but your point's well taken, uh, and I will continue to try to get those programs back through the legislative process and regain the momentum that we had when it was outlawed. But it's the Realtors and Home Builders Association that killed that program.
Mm-hmm.
But thank you for being here and as always, your comments are well received and well taken.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
And thank you, Officer.
Yeah, no kidding.
But I'm not the only one. I've got to tell you, after thirty-three years of picking up garbage in the park, that park is cleaner than it's ever been in thirty-three years. And I'm not the only one doing it. I will do it. And thank you for our new walking bridge. Very good. Doesn't shake.
You can drive an Abrams tank over that sucker.
Yes, yes. They're very nice. Good job.
Nanette Cummings.
Sorry. After tone everyone, my name is Nanette Cummings, twelve seventeen, Allen Lane, seven three one three oh. I'm here as the gentleman before. I agree with a lot of things he said. My issue with the budget is, I noticed for the last many years now, Ward five has been an issue for me. I didn't used to come to the council meetings because I thought we were just left behind. But now, the, the neighborhood that I am is Ashton Heights. It is going down, down, down. I just had to talk to the code enforcement tonight because I've came the last two meetings, and I guess you all have seen me here, to talk to him about it. The grass is now almost four feet tall. We've been calling, the neighbors are calling, and I get too many phone calls. I come in from work and they are saying to me, well, what are, what are you going to do about it? You keep telling us they're working at it. I'm not seeing any improvement. I almost took pictures tonight to come to say, hey, the budget is going, let's see what's going on in Ward five. As I looked over the budget, and I have not seen the full budget, so I can't say I've seen it from head to toe, because I haven't. I don't see where any improvements are going in Ward five. It, it behooves me that nothing is going on there. Buildings are still closing, they're looking shabby, and I drive up Tenth every day. I need to see some, a little improvement. I don't know what to do. I clean up also. I pick up trash also. Anyone that really knows me know that, because I want a beautiful yard. I also have a, a corner lot that trash is going, dogs are running wild. I mean, this is ridiculous. We have money to have a father-daughter dance, we have money to do certain things like the MLK breakfast that I'm a supporter of. We need to put some money back into the city where it shows us. And I am appalled, and I would like to see a change with the budget where we're being added in Ward five. I understand Ms. Banner is in Ward five. Her area is a little better than mine. That may be because she's in the inner city, but I need someone to look toward us, because right now I'm not seeing it. And I haven't seen it for thirteen years. It needs to start improving.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's all I'm asking.
Well, and your point's well taken and I wholeheartedly agree with you. Um, in my state of the city address this year, I have asked that we commission a study to study the northeast tenth corridor, to see what we can do to redevelop those businesses, because that was a vibrant-
Yes, it was. I came in when Green Hall, two years after I came in, Green Hall left. The Dollar Store's been there, there's been some other events and stuff. Now, the longstanding of, um, there, what is it, Del Rancho's is moved over to twenty-third.
Yes, ma'am.
We've lost so many. I, my area was mostly elders. Well, I guess I'm an elder now because I'm moving around also. But I have grandkids there, I have a daughter there, and I think the neighborhood was fine before. I would like to see some improvement.
Yes, ma'am. Your point's well taken and we will certainly work as hard as we possibly can to improve that area.
I would appreciate it.
And, uh, if you have any problems at all, don't hesitate to call Ms. Banner or my office and, uh, we'll try to facilitate whatever we need to do.
I appreciate that. I really would. And I will be taking this information back to the neighborhood and letting them also-
Are you in the same neighborhood association as Percy Dukes?
No, I mean not.
Okay.
I'm not a part of this association.
Percy lives over in that area and he called me the other day about another issue too.
Yes.
So, yes, ma'am, we, we will be working diligently to correct some of those issues.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate it. On Allen. Again, this is a public hearing on the budget. Does anyone else have anything to bring before the council? Hearing or seeing none, chaired entertaining motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Once again, I'm-
I, I just wanted to see if the, uh, fire chief-
Oh, that's right, that's right.
The union.
Mr. Beeb out, you want to come address the questions?
Doug Beeb out, thirteen thousand, two hundred, Shorty Lane, Choctaw, Oklahoma. I'm the president of the Midwest City Firefighters Association.
It is a pleasure to meet you for the first time, I believe, this may be the first time we've come, um, across each other. Uh, I just, um, have a few questions. I've been advised that there is a position that is included, incorporated into the budget this year, uh, for a training captain. Um, and I, one of the main questions I had is whether or not all members of the union have been able to participate, um, to vote for this position that is budgeted for.
Okay, so typically the process, and if I misspeak, chief, typically the process, what we did is take it a step further back. ESCI came in several years ago, they did a master plan of the fire department. One of the things that we took away from that was to create a strategic planning committee within the fire department. And so Chief Norton has done a good job of establishing that committee and regularly visiting that committee on at least an annual basis. So I believe our last strategic planning committee was back in December in preparation for budget. Um, and so what we identified was positions that we needed to fill within the training division, because right now we have a training division of one. And with the training facility coming up out of the ground, I would encourage you guys all to go look at if you have, and it's going to be a beautiful facility, uh, for the city and, and a great representation of the city. Uh, however, what we wanted to do was to add staff to that division to assist us in running the training division. So basically what happens is strategic planning, we identify the need. We agree on that need, we submit it to the chief, he works with city staff and the city manager's approval to incorporate those into the budget. Now, once council approves the budget, okay, then what happens is the chief, the union president, labor and management, so to speak, they sit and now they make the determination of, okay, what is the position truly, what will be its duties and responsibilities? So obviously the chief, city manager, they have management rights, right, to create the position. They come to you for funding to do so. Then they have a, city has a duty to bargain the wages, benefits and working conditions of that. So basically step one is the strategic committee, the strategic planning committee identified the need. Step two is it's placed within the budget with consultation of the city manager. Step three is council approves budget. Step four is labor and management work together to create the details, to get into the weeds of the position. And there are certain subjects, again, working distance, wages and benefits, that would be brought before the membership in order for them to vote. So right now, really the only thing for the membership to do, what we're doing proactively is we are currently surveying, we have a survey out to our membership concerning the generic working conditions and wages and benefits of the position to seek their input so that when we do sit with labor and management to begin to negotiate kind of the details, uh, will represent their interest there. And then it'll be brought back for a vote. So the union voting on the position is like step six and we're in three.
Uh, for walking me through that process.
Sure.
Do, so based on that answer, would it be fair to, to say that at this point, we don't really have a description for those positions, a job description for those positions as of yet?
Well, I, I think it's fair to say that we don't have an exactly written, detailed, step-by-step plan. What we have is a vision and an intent. And until such time as we were approved for, or the chief budget was approved and funding was apportioned for the position, then we go about deliberating again, dotting all the lowercase J's and, and I's, so to speak.
So based, just in, in what he explained in another step, when you guys approve the budget and approve to fund a position, we come out, we work these things out, we sit down with the city manager, tell him where we're at and, and everything goes through. Then we fill out, I have to fill out a notice to fill vacancy, and that's the final step for him to say yes, that you can fill the vacancy, agrees to the position, sees the need, everything's, all the I's have been dotted, T's have been crossed and everything's right. So this step here is just to say, we're going to allocate the money towards that, but doesn't necessarily say, we still have to come to some agreements and get with him to get the position filled, if you will.
Got it.
And as far as the, I, I, and Dawn may want to weigh in on this, but as far as the inner workings of the union, that is not within our, our right to be involved in. That is within the purview of the union. So questions about how they internally handle that? We, we have labor management relations with the union president.
Well, I think it's fair to say too, that even that state statute has the Police and Fire Arbitration Act that has, um, I'm going to get them wrong, five things that factors that, that require us to negotiate, and wages and benefits and working conditions is one of them. So if not, then we end up in unfair labor practice though.
But the bottom line is you haven't even got to the point where the position's funded yet. So there really wasn't any need to do all the, all the other stuff because basically you'd be putting a cart in front of the horse.
Correct.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you for breaking that down and thank you for being open enough to break down the procedure within the union. I am a big, huge fan and supporter of unions. I believe in them. Um, and, and most importantly, the people and the residents of Midwest City believe in our public safety guys, both fire and police. I've yet to receive a complaint about our firefighters or police. If anything, we all know at this horseshoe, um, people feel safe and, and they're grateful to what you guys do each and every day. So thank you.
And I want to comment, you, you made a comment about, we need to get out there and look at the training facility. I went by before they put the metal in, the metal train, the burn building. I just happened to pass it yesterday as going to the dog groomers when they were bringing them in and on the way back from the groomers, Allied Steel was showing up with a crane- with a crane, so... And I drove by today. It's pretty impressive.
Yeah, it is. We have a huge amount of potential in personnel in our department, and this training facility is basically going to set that loose. I would put us up against any department in the state or the region, once we are able to maximize that facility. It is truly a dream come true, and the work of the city manager, the work of this council to get that bond out, the support of the citizens to vote for that bond is... Man, I'm getting goosebumps just talking about it. So thank you very much. You have any more for me? Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstention? I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call vote.
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Banner?
Nay.
Favors?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
By my count, motion passed. Okay, now we enter into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council? Hearing or seeing none, we do have an executive session attached to this. Mr. Line, go ahead and read that, and then I would entertain a motion to recess.
City clerk doesn't want me to read it.
So...
I don't mean that yet.
Okay, I need a motion to recess.
Motion to recess, second.
And a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. We are hereby recessed, and I call the order, the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We have a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or if unanimous consent cannot be received, then the item or items will be removed and heard in regular order. The chair would entertain a motion to approve pulling item number three for further review.
Also, could we pull number two, please, Mayor?
Okay, I would entertain a motion to indicate that.
Can we move to approve consent agendas outside of number two and three being pulled for discussion?
Sir.
I have a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Item number two, Mr. Line.
Stretching consideration, possible action, approving supplemental budget adjustments to the following fund for fiscal year 2223, increasing the golf fund revenue miscellaneous fifty-five hundred and ten dollars expenditures of Tom, Tom, and Redwood.
Would you break that down for me? What does that mean?
Sure. So what this means is, the golf, they've had surplus, and so they've sold off extra things, and so they've tapped into those revenues of sold-off items in order to buy the, I believe it's a fifty-five hundred dollar mower that they needed. So that's... We just... As funny as it sounds, we had to do that in order for them to use those funds to be able to purchase the mower.
So when you go back to our surplus property program that we've talked to the council about, we sell items over eBay, public, there's a couple of other public auctions, and that money that is sold from whatever equipment that's surplus through the council is sold is put into an account for capital expenditures. But those are non-budgeted items, so they have to come back through the council when they use that money.
I think the reason I pulled that particular item, and I think it goes back to some of the concerns I have, I will tell you, I am not comfortable putting more money in the golf budget at this point. If I'm correct, I think we've spent over five million dollars to get where we are with the golf course, and so I'm not comfortable approving any more golf expenditures.
Just to remind you, Ms. Banner, this money is... Was equipment the golf course already owned, and they sold it, so they're not... You're not putting new money in.
Right.
I'd like to see some of the golf course money be redirected towards other funds. I guess this is where I'm getting.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Crumay? Chair, a question for the first, second. On the motion and the second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
No problem.
Byrne?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Banner?
Nay.
Favors?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Then we're pulling item number three, taking no action.
Taking no action, I'm not sure if you're ready. Let me say, we move into discussion item, number one.
Public hearing with discussion, consideration, and vote on a resolution, the Midwest City Municipal Authority approving its budget for fiscal year 2324 in the amount of fifty-two million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, nine sixteen.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything they would like to ask in reference to this particular budget item? Does anyone have any questions, and Mr. Crumay? Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Roll call vote, please.
Byrne?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Banner?
Nay.
Favors?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion approved. We now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we're hereby adjourned, and I call the order, the Midwest City Hospital Authority. We have, we once again have a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, trustees can, by unanimous consent, approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or unanimous consent cannot be received, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. The one discussion item, Mr. Line.
Public hearing with discussion, consideration, and vote on a resolution of the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority approving its budget for fiscal year 2324 in the amount of seven million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, four eighty-eight for the discretionary, three million, seven oh four, three sixty-five for the compounded principal, three million, oh forty for the in lieu of ROR miscellaneous, and then five hundred and thirty-one thousand, oh twenty-nine for the grants division, and one million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, oh thirty-three for the Sooner Rose tax increment financing.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have any questions about this particular budget item?
Let me explain. So this is the... To start with, the compounded principal is the roughly hundred million dollars that has the city has from back in ninety-eight?
Eight.
Ninety-six?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, when the hospital authority was leased to, at the time, HMA, and then subsequently CHS, and now it is at lease with St. Anthony's. And so that money is controlled and established rules set by a public trust document and an indenture that we follow, that if we ever had to take the hospital over, that money is supposed to be there for us to manage the hospital if we had to manage it ourselves. There are rules that allow that compounded principal to be spent on certain things within the hospital and the district itself to improve the hospital. Then there's... Of the compounded principal, two percent each year is distributed back to the city. Seventy-five percent of that money goes into a discretionary account for economic development purposes. Twenty-five percent of that, two percent discretionary, goes in for grants, and that's the five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of community grants that the board grantors, which is appointed by the chamber and by this body, review and then recommend to the council for funding. And then the actual money, it's in lieu of, it used to be that the taxes in lieu of were paid by HMA, subsequently CHS, now is paid by a lease payment of one million dollars from St. Anthony's per year into the ROR account.
So have any questions, comments? Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Approve, second.
And a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we'll need to do a roll call vote.
Byrne?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Banner?
Nay.
Favors?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion is approved. Now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we're hereby adjourned, and I call the order, the Special Economic Development Authority. We have a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that the trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to request or discuss an item, it will... Or a unanimous consent cannot be received, then the item or items will be removed and heard in regular order. I would entertain a motion to approve pulling item number three, taking no action.
Move to approve, pulling item three with no action.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. We do have a discussion item attached to this agenda, Mr. Line.
Public hearing with discussion, consideration, and vote on a resolution, the Midwest City Economic Development Authority approving its budget for fiscal year 2324 in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand, oh ninety-eight.
Question to approve.
Hold on, this is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council concerning this budget item? Hearing or seeing none, I do have a motion, and I have a second. Roll call vote.
Byrne?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Banner?
Nay.
Favors?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. According to my count, motion is approved. We now move into public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we're hereby adjourned, and I would take a motion to reconvene the council.
Special utilities.
That didn't end up on my...
That's right.
We're hereby adjourned from the other agenda, and we call the order, the Midwest City Special Utilities Authority. We have a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so trustees can, by unanimous consent, approve one routine or routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or unanimous consent cannot be received, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. To entertain a motion to approve.
Well, hang on one second, Mr. Mayor. I found that mistake, and we have to take number two off.
Number two is no action.
Yes.
Yes.
It would be nice to have this.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to take item... To take no action on item number two and approve item number one. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Now, I would entertain a motion to reconvene the...
No, we got one discussion item.
Well, yeah. Okay, we got a discussion item, Mr. Line.
Public hearing with discussion, consideration, and vote on a resolution, the Midwest City Utilities Authority approving its budget for fiscal year 2324 in the amount of five hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Motion to approve, second.
It is a public hearing. Anybody have anything to bring for the authority? Now...
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Byrne?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Banner?
Nay.
Favors?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Now, can I move back? Oh, we got a public discussion. You guys jacked me up. Is there anybody who wants to bring anything for the authority? Hearing or seeing none. We're hereby adjourned, and I would take a motion to reconvene...
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. We do have a... Now, can we read it?
Yes, you may.
We do have an executive session attached to this agenda. Mr. Line.
Discussion, consideration, possible action entering to executive session is allowed under Title 25, Section 307b4. Discuss confidential communications between a public body, its attorney, concerning a pending investigation claim or action of the public body when the advice of its attorney determines that disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the public body to process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation, and proceeding in the public interest, and authorizing the city manager to take actions, approved based on discussion regarding, one, Resolution 2023-12 that declared buildings 401A, 401B, 403, 405, 407, 409, 411, 413, 415, 433, 437, and 439 located in the 1200 North Air Depot Boulevard as dilapidated, and, two, the legal opinion outside council regarding contractual issues.
Chair, entertain a motion, move into executive session. Can I finish, please?
We have a motion and a second before we get on.
We're going to fight.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in executive... We're here, executive session. Thank you for being here and indulging this fiasco.